God, we had a pause before you this evening and thank you for who you are. And thank you for the opportunity to serve this community. And we ask that you continue to watch over those who have lost loved ones from the big living room and those that are still suffering from all of the ripple effects that society has faced because of that. We ask you all to help us make as many decisions as we can for this community.
Amen.
All right. As I told you a minute ago, I just came from the dentist and my mouth is sore, so that's a good reason for me not to talk to you. So I'll get through this as quickly as possible. There, there's just a couple of documents that.
Read it in there with call interest.
Okay, that I decided to give to you late. It's, it's not on the genus, doesn't vote on it. It's just information I wanted you to have. One is the revenue from the swimming pool for this year. So we opened the thirtieth of May or thirty first. Well, it rained, so it was a day late, I think it was June first. So from, from June first until now, total revenue has been thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. That's party rentals, swim team money, that's swim lesson money, and that's full parties and general admission. Donetta has done a good job this year, even though we didn't have quite as many big donations to help feed the kids as we had in the past. We have had some, and I'm not sure exactly what, but she's done a good job of getting some of that summer feeding moved down there to them on certain days. And we are concessions, we sell it absolutely as, just as minimal as we can sell it so the kids can have pop and snacks and all that. And still, it's been a good year, and this is about typical right on track.
Is that, is that what it normally is?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I feel like it's probably up just a little bit.
I think it's up.
If we looked, if we compared it, it'd probably be up just a little bit.
Cause we'll be taking in some more even though there's not that much that's left in the daytime.
Haynesville's redoing theirs, so they didn't open this year at all. And Hines didn't open this year at all. And I'm thinking Dreamland did nothing at all. So we got some kids from farther out that we normally don't get. Also, just wanted to update you on alcohol sales, cause people do ask me this from time to time. Uh, I don't know why there's so much interest, but they are. So licensing fees, we've brought in sixty-three hundred dollars, which is exactly what we should have. And that doesn't change, the only way that changes is if another place opens. So that's everybody paying their license. Regulatory fees is five percent of total alcohol sales. We had budgeted last year, expected revenue of a hundred and thirty-five thousand. We brought in a hundred and sixty, uh, two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five for a surplus of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And pandemic must have spurred spirits. Okay, with that, that's just information I wanted you all to have. With that, uh, the only other comments I have is all the projects are right on track. We're getting real, real close, we're probably ninety-eight or ninety-nine percent done. It's a big project, waiting on the state to put on the final coat of asphalt and, uh, put on the final coat of asphalt and put in the handicap thing. If you noticed on the sidewalk, as they come in, now they'll have the things for the blind or, uh, sight deficient people, they'll hit the nubbins and know, know where they've been. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, how are you all this evening?
Good. Uh, so that's, that's the only comments I have on projects, so, uh, old business. Uh, item number three, we have two sets of minutes to approve. If we could get a motion to approve minutes from May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one.
May must be approved.
Motion by Mr. Schaefer, second, by Mr. Caudle. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I have a motion, we approve minutes from June eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion.
Motion by.
Mr. Robson, second by McClanahan, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, cough, go, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. If you would, I'd like to switch five and six, just for the sake of the flow of the meeting, and then we'll get right on to new business. Number six, annexation, all I need from you all is, is I wanted to bring you up to date on where we stand. The last time we discussed it was on the Zoom meeting, or at least I know Matt was on Zoom, maybe somebody else too. And it was a lot of detailed stuff to do on Zoom, and we just seemed to have a lot of confusion. And, uh, we said, let's just table this tonight, bring it back up when we're all in person again, and not try and discuss all this on Zoom. Where we stood that night, and Kathy has brought a copy, most of y'all got copies the night of that meeting, but if you lock another copy. It's the only one we got, but it's there. Basically, the gentleman that did the surveying before, uh, back when the annexation occurred before me, for whatever reason, he don't seem to be doing it, I, I met with him, and then he just went AWOL, wouldn't give us a price, wouldn't call back or nothing. And then we got into COVID and everything just went on the haul. So the only local surveyors that I thought could do it locally was P and A, and they had a surveyor, Mike Shapaka, who is the county surveyor. And, uh, so they looked into the whole situation, and I was like, we need a price. And so he came here and made a proposal of, I believe, thirty-two thousand?
I think so.
Thirty, thirty-seven thousand dollars.
Thirty-two thousand, five hundred.
Yes, now in that was, you know, in order to annex what we had proposed way back when we discussed it, there's gonna have to be surveying done. In other words, it's not going, this time, it's not gonna be as simple as just, we're going up this road and down this road and down this creek and that's it. That's kind of what happened before when they did the Walmart, it wasn't complicated.
It was simple, I did it. And I'm not a mad person.
So he was like, it was only eight or nine thousand dollars that time, I think, but it was very, very simple. This would be much more complex because of where it is, it's not going by road boundaries, it would have to be surveyed. And, uh, he also brought to our attention, and he is dead right, that one annexation back when the, the, the surveyor and the coordinates and everything is not accurate.
Wasn't the last man?
Wasn't the last man, it was one before that. So even if you look at the state right now, they say our city boundaries is, uh, they got classified as marginal or something to that extent.
It's like when you put a map over top of a map, then you can see it.
Yeah, so if there's a way to, you know, take Google Earth and overlay city limits, well, when you do that with Google Earth and you overlay city limits on it, it's all, it's all skewed, the whole city skewed that much. And basically, that was from, I think, back in the day when GPS instruments wasn't near as good as they are today. Now they can go out there and get to within an inch, back in the day, you didn't get that accurate. I think that's probably what's caused it. And so the state accepted it and just let it go, but he's just saying, and I probably agree with you, if we're gonna go ahead and go through with this, while we're doing this, we leave those deeds of correction, correct fact to while we're doing it. So I guess what I'm needing from you all tonight is, A, do we still want to do this? Cause I've carried it on the back burner for years now. And two, uh, you know, if we do, is, is, is this something you want to go with? You want me to try to find more surveyors to bring us more prices? I don't know where, but I can try. I could try, I mean, it ain't, I don't think it's gonna be anybody right around here, it'd have to be, you know, away somewhere, but I don't care to try. If you want to do that, if you want to go with this guy, let's do it. If you want to forget it, let's forget it, and if you want me to just try to find cheaper, I can do that. And last thing I would say, he also proposed doing an hourly rate.
I was gonna ask you that.
And, you know, he, talking to him one-on-one, he thinks that if he did the hourly rate, we would come out cheaper, but there's no guarantee of that. He don't know how many hours it's gonna take. If anybody has any knowledge of surveying, more than me, cause I have none, and has any knowledge of any more surveyors or has a knowledge of what the price should be, I'd be glad to take your input, cause I, I don't.
And you know, that may have been a reason why, you know, I said at a previous meeting, that when we did the Walmart annexation, it only cost us like nine thousand dollars. But he didn't have the complicated.
No, it was simple. He used almost like KYTC boundaries that had already been surveyed, moved them all.
And so they do work for the county also, you said, P and A is the county surveyor?
The guy, uh, Mike Shapaka, works for P and A, he is also the county surveyor.
Ah, gotcha, okay.
Yeah. This does not fall in his duties as county surveyor, though.
What's your gut on that, on the price?
At fir-, my gut at first was that it was too, too high. And I think I was basing that off of what we paid before. And after he explained to me and I went back and reviewed, and what Kathy said is true, that guy did very little really. Because it went right up this road that, that had just been built, Walmart had just been built, you know, twenty-three had good boundaries. So he was able to go pull data and use that. This annexation is not gonna be that simple. It's one of the places that has to be surveyed by him. And then Bud could explain to you better about deeds, I mean, basically, there's a, a big, or is it one big deed with all this description in it?
What we, what we have to do, we have to act, the initial ordinance and then the final ordinance.
Yeah.
That would describe, you know, what was being annexed and have a map attached to it.
So we gotta have a good map, I doubt it. Uh, so after a discussion with him, I can see where the one was way cheaper, plus we're ten years down the road or six years down the road. So I can see now, is it maybe still a little bit out there? It might be, I don't know, but we're probably not gonna get it for nothing like the price we did last time.
Ten years ago.
You know, no matter who. So, and we don't have to decide tonight, but it's just, it's something we just keep putting off and keep putting off and, you know, uh, I think every, you know, we met, and we met, and we had town hall meetings, um, some of y'all was here. We, we hasted and hasted, I think we all agree on where to annex with maybe, there's one or two little questions that could, we could be changed on the fly, you know, uh, but I think we all pretty much agree on, you know, we're trying to get twenty-five sixty-five with, you know, the dollar stores and KFCs and the, the, uh, the Hollister Center out there with the hospital, none of those doctor's offices is in the city. None of that's in the city. And that's, you know, I think it, our purpose is to bring the businesses in the city.
Well, there was also the issues with like, from where I can remember, like, police coverage, where places they could go and they couldn't go because it switched to county and.
Yes, that's exactly right. They don't, uh, they don't do anything at Stella Moore. So like, if they need the police down there at Stella Moore, that's not in the city. And again, I always say, it's not just take anything away from the sheriff's department, it's just they got a whole county to cover. And if they're in the head of Terryville, and something's going on, we're here and they're not, you know? The boys leave the city and go through the county to go back to the city to go to the hospital or Maddlebrook. But, uh, I'll do whatever you all want, I'm perfectly happy either way. I mean, if you think we can, I, I, I don't know where else I would check, but surely there is more. And if you want me to get serious about finding somebody else so that we at least got two quotes to compare, I'll start, I'll start doing that tomorrow.
Part of me is concerned that there's big log backlog of work in all directions.
That's what I'd say, you're right. I'd say you're right. And one thing I did tell Mike, it's not in that, I don't think, but I did tell him that if we did it, I wouldn't want in the agreement, timeline. You get X amount done, we pay X amount. You get X amount done, we pay X amount, and we gotta know pretty much a timeline of when you're gonna get it done.
Is there a timeline?
Not just entering some open-ended, you know, and he was cool with that.
Did he, did he give an estimate on how long?
And he said he thought it would be between ninety days and six months. With all the work we've got going on and all, you know?
Would he be doing this through P and A or through himself?
Through P and A.
Okay.
I think the reason for that is insurance and.
And then they have some, you know, it's got the access.
Yeah.
I personally would like to see another, uh, presentation.
From him or somebody else?
Him or someone else.
Okay, good deal.
I'm not confident in the last.
Okay, good deal. I can do that, I can certainly ask him. And I don't care, I just, I don't know where to find, I really don't, if anybody knows.
I feel like there were a lot of questions asked that he couldn't answer.
Couldn't answer, yeah. And we was on Zoom, hype on Zoom, hype not, that was confusing.
When we did the last one, I got the names for those surveyors, and I got about three or four, Teresa Pig, and she's retired, but she may still know.
Yeah. And it never hurts to get to a process, I'm always cool with that. If I can just find somebody to give us a price. And the Elliot guy that did this before, I can, when I met with him, the one thing I could see right off, he was very knowledgeable of annexation. That's just about all he does for cities and counties or cities around the tri-state, that's what he does, he specializes in. But why he quit, I don't know, and then, actually, Mike, if y'all remember, Mike said, he contacted him and he answered him and told him that his computer had gotten trashed or something, and he had to send it off to try to get the data received. I don't know, cause Mike was wanting to get some files from him, and he finally did, but took forever.
Yeah, I think Ashley's thought about having, maybe tried in Au-, in August to have a couple of presentations.
I mean, obviously, I would love to stay in, in the county.
Yeah.
But I'm just not confident, I'm not confident with those, the presentation that I asked.
I got you, I got you. Uh, I don't think that would be a problem, and I think, uh, let's see, Chris came with him that night, didn't he? And Bob didn't, he was sick, he's doing better now, he had been really sick, but he's doing better now. We could ask him to come back, and then if, I'll ask Tracy, if I can find any other name of anybody that will give us a price, I'll check with him too.
And two, uh, I'm sorry, we had several, couple of phone calls today asking about the annexation, if it was in their area. And what I was getting at, I don't think, and we could have some, I'm sure, but I don't think we have the opposition in what we're talking about like we did High Bottom and that stuff from residents. But, you know, when we do the, go through the whole process, they have the opportunity to come in here and tell us.
Yeah.
That they don't like it.
Carol, what's the projected increase in tax revenue from, from there, you know?
Uh, Teresa figured that out for me, and it was roughly fourteen million dollars of assessments, which is not that mu-, it's not what you think, it's not that much tax.
Yeah.
Now, uh, and then, if you remember, if we, if they're, if they're currently outside the city, they're paying more. Trash, water, and sewer. So once we annex and fire, they're paying fire tax, water, sewer, and trash increased more. If we annex them, then their water goes down, their sewer goes down, their trash goes down, their fire fee goes away completely, cause they get free then. So in the, in the, when you balance it out, it's like the city does gain a little bit of tax revenue and the water loses. Cause the water and sewer rates go down, trash loses.
Fire district.
The city, the fire district loses. But then the insurance premium tax that's on that is just impossible to, I don't know how you would ever get a hit of that much of a catch, I don't know, I don't know. But the tax revenue is not, you know, the entire city now is three hundred and something thousand dollars if everybody paying taxes.
And what the insurance premium does to an individual is, any insurance you buy except medical has an eight percent tax on it, the city does.
Yeah. But.
If you're insuring your car, they would add eight percent.
I hear property tax, three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars is what was last year. And I'm thinking we figured it would add something like thirty-some thousand, annexation, it wasn't much.
It's been too long, it would.
Teresa figured it out for me, and that was a rough guess, but she's probably pretty close. Cause she figured how much is the property, it was about fourteen million dollars of property. But you're only talking about, um, two-some percent of, of that, you know?
Oh, oh, two-fourths.
Oh, two-fourth percent. So you're not talking about much tax revenue. But it, uh.
A hundred thousand dollars, that'd be two-hundred-and-forty dollars.
Yeah. And, uh.
Two-hundred-and-forty-four.
Uh, like I said, the fire, the fire district goes down, water and sewer goes down, trash goes down. Just the trash alone, uh, it's quite a bit of savings if you live in the city. I believe it's about eight dollars a month difference.
Yeah, I don't know about that area.
If you live outside, you're paying eight dollars more a month than you are in. So that's a hundred dollars a year right there, that you're gonna save from when we put you in the city. So, and then your water's gonna go down, your sewer's gonna go down, and I have an explanation of that on a piece of paper I did before. So if your house values at a hundred thousand dollars or less at the county, you're gonna come out ahead to be in the city, except for whatever insurance you have. I don't wanna figure that. All right, so I think what you're telling me is get him back and find another qualified and get one. Okay, good enough. All right, last complicated mess. Code enforcement, we discussed this last meeting, and basically, uh, I think everybody was in agreeance because it was gonna affect the budget one way or the other. And, and I, I basically had asked you all, I think, for, for some help, cause one of the biggest things that, well, no, it's just, it's become very, very, very common, almost a daily thing, to deal with complaints on code. And it's just more and more and more, and I always, I always, I'm not, I always just kind of took the approach, when we deal with them one-on-one, you know, we'll try to work through them one-on-one, we'll try to keep them out there and get the problem solved as much as we can without bringing it in here. And, uh, but as I go to trainings and meetings with Kentucky League of Cities and talk to other cities, I see that most all other cities are doing it much different than we are. And, uh, so basically, what it boils down to is, the way we currently stand, and I won't explain this to you, the way I read this, and then, we certainly gotta work with the city attorney, that's very important, so, uh, I want him to put his input in too. But basically, the way this had been done, if you, we have a code of ordinances, uh, we have an ordinance that has a nuisance, ordinance that has a list of nuisances and violations that go with them. And then we have an animal ordinance, which is kind of similar, nuisance of animals goes along with the same thing. But the trouble is, we've not had a board to bring up those cases or take up those things. So if, if our code enforcement officer goes out and says, hey, you're in violation of X, Y, Z code, so-and-so-and-so here, and you need to do something about it, we just took the approach, come on, do it. Some of them do it, some of them it's that easy. The ones that don't, uh, because we don't have that board in place, we don't have any means basically of charging them with that city violation because they don't have any means to come and state their side. So what it's forced us to do then is, we end up charging them a kind of a state violation and send it to district court. So the violation that's written, what is it, Greg?
That violation of local ordinance.
Yeah, so they have to write them on a state ticket that says, you violated the local ordinance. So you send it up there to district court and, and not knocking anybody up there or anything up there. Cause I, sure, I have no idea how much those people have to deal with, with, with all the traffic citations, drugs, hits, all that stuff. But I know that it's just, it's on the bottom of the list, it's not, it has typically, every time we sent one up there, I don't know of any resolve we got that I can think of.
They basically pretty much just tell them the same thing we tell them, I get it done.
Get this, and they give a timeline to get it done. And, and lay it over, and then, and, and, and some of it had just been thrown out, uh, before they were given, just to get it turned out. But I don't think we got much resolved that way, at all. So your other option, if you don't want to do that, go straight to district court, is to have a, a code enforcement board, and that's what, all the cities that I've talked to and League of Cities suggest. So if you read the first page of what we sent you, Understanding House Bill four-twenty-two, prior to this, there was like three KRSs that kind of mumbo jumbo how cities would deal with it. League of Cities has fought for this for several years to get those all rolled into one, and one new, uh, House Bill four-twenty-two that passed in twenty sixteen. And the, the previous statutes regarding nuisance and code enforcement standards contain conflicting provisions and located in se- separate chapters of the KRS. And KLC advocated for consolidating these. Therefore, the ultimate goal of the new House Bill four-twenty-two was to take the best provisions of those three KRSs, roll them into one, and now it's called the Local Code Enforcement Board Act, and combine them into a single statute that contains the most effective procedures available while still allowing for broad local customization. In other words, we don't have to do it like Lexington, we don't have to do it like Moorehead. As long as we're within these bounds, we do it what's best for us, and that's what League of Cities wants. So basically, what we can do if we want to, to have a local code enforcement board here. Kentucky League of Cities has put out two model ordinances, Model A and Model B. Bud submitted to you Model B, which is a code enforcement board with a hearing office. And basically, there's still a bunch of choices within this ordinance that we could choose, but to boil it down mostly, there's a board, and on that board, the option I like best, one of the members on the board is a hearing officer. And so if our new code enforcement officer comes up to your property, what he does is decides, are you in violation of this code or not? And if he thinks you are, he gives you a notice saying, you're in violation of city code X, Y, Z, and you've got thirty days or fifteen, or whatever, he gives them an option to, now's the time to take this notice and come into compliance, and you're no longer in violation of that code. So it gives them that time, if they don't do it then, then he would go back and write them a legitimate citation. So now it's not a notice, it's a citation. Once they get that citation, then, you know, the, the, the procedures start of what you're gonna do then about the fines, the liens, the, what you're gonna do to remedy the situation. And basically, the code enforcement officer would bring that list of. And basically, the code enforcement officer would bring that list of violations to the hearing officer. The hearing officer looks at it and sees if he has, uh, if he agrees with pictures, with witnesses, with whatever, that you are in fact in violation of X, Y, Z. So therefore, if the, if the officer just had a bidet against so-and-so, that's a, that's a checkpoint. He goes out and writes a citation, the hearing officer's gonna look at it and say, no, he's not in violation. Or yes, he is. And then, uh, they have a right then to protest that decision and come before the board. And then the board make, uh, you can do it two ways. Either the hearing officer can make a final order, or recommend a final order to the board. And then you have two choices with that. If, but essentially, if the, if the citizen comes to the board, he has the right to state his case, and you almost like have a hearing, and the board makes a decision. If the, if the citizen don't like that decision, then he can appeal it to district court. And you end up back where, where we stayed away from, but this time, he's the one taking it up there, saying, I think I've been doing wrong, the city's charging me something. So that's good. Citizens still have a way to go state their case if I've done them wrong, you know? And then two, if they don't show, if they just don't show, then our ordinance says, you're basically, you're guilty, the fines go in place, we can go clean up the property, and we can put a lien against your property. Now, that's a whole nother step two of putting liens on that Bud's probably gonna take. But basically, guys, we just need to decide whether we want to go back and have them, it's, it's, which is easier? I, I've read through this thing four times. I'll be honest with you, it's probably easier to do what Ben does. Which is most effective, I think this one. And this is gonna require our code enforcement officer to keep a database, a log of all citations, all notice of violations, all citations. And, uh, it's gonna always be, the property owner has to be properly notified. You know, we can't just tell his neighbor to tell him, he's got to be properly notified and all those things. So I think what, you know, I'll let Bud finish, but what we want from you all to know is, do you want to go back and do it like what Ben does and send it to district court? Or do we want to control the situation in-house, give the code enforcement officer the right to write a citation that is dealt with in the city, not up there to district court? Bud?
Well, you have a, um, it's in your packet, it's not in color. Can you see that?
Which was a problem.
I see it. This, this what you have, this procedure, this is our structure. This is code enforcement board only, code enforcement board plus hearing officer's recommended order. Uh, then go to recommended order or a final order, and then appeal to the code enforcement board, or they can do a direct appeal to district court. The mayor and I discussed this briefly, uh, this afternoon, and he wasn't know what my thinking on it was. And many, many years ago, when I was a young air force officer, they always told us kids, you know what that is?
Keep it simple, stupid.
Simple, stupid. My, my personal, uh, preference is, uh, to have a hearing officer make a final decision. Because if we have a, if we just have a board, go from the hearing officer to the board, that's another layer. That's another bunch of people we have to get appointed. And, uh, I guess it's more legal due process with having a board in there. But to me, the simplest thing to do is, is have a hearing officer, have them issue a final order, and, and then they go to, uh, to the district court on an appeal. That's, that's my thinking on it. Because when you start, uh, putting in, for example, a code enforcement board, uh, you might have a hearing officer with a recommended order, and then they appeal that to the code enforcement board, and then that's from there to the district court, it's just another layer that we have to deal with.
That does not, that not mean that you have a code enforcement board plus a hearing officer?
Uh, I think if it might do it, I'm gonna look into that more, what I'd like to do. We may have to have a.
I believe you do.
Board.
You have to have a board, plus you can have people.
But I think if we can give the authority to the hearing officer to issue a final order.
Yeah.
What you upgraded is, one of the code enforcement board members will send is the hearing officer.
And you could take a lot of the time.
Until calling anybody in, having Haken's hear the cases, and then feels like a need to take them.